That's my grandson. He's the first grader. And then that's my granddaughter here. She's a junior. And this is my granddaughter. She's five.
Oh, she's five.
She's five. She's about this tall. She's six feet.
Yeah.
You work that.
She's up here at that point.
Flashpoint.
There's my granddaughter. She's a senior. I have one of my grandsons. He's...
We got a guy this time.
Yeah. And then I have another granddaughter.
We saw him. I was in his room. Did I live there? I think a fifth grader and maybe a second.
Ready? All right. Good morning, everyone. We just to talk through what's going to happen today. We'll start, of course, now with our reports meeting. We'll probably then take a brief break and transition to our special meeting, which starts at 10 o'clock. And then upon conclusion of that, we'll move on to a work session. So a pretty full morning this Friday morning. First up, we have the Arkansas Teacher of the Year report from Randy House.
Good morning. I am absolutely so excited to talk to you this morning about this school and one educator in particular. When I came before you for my very first presentation report back in July, I gave you a book of pictures. And I talked about, these are pictures that teachers had sent me throughout the state. And I said that I was so excited to go to one classroom especially, the classroom of Mr. Ward. Because what he had sent to me was so out of the box and innovative, I had to see that in person. And so with a little bit of convincing and some low-key harassment, he finally let me come in to his classroom. And on the way home, I was on the phone with Megan, and I was like, I'm going to bring him into the board. So I'm going to start just by sharing a little bit about the school as a whole, because beyond Mr. Ward, there were several things that were impressive. And then I'm going to talk specifically about Mr. Ward and his class, and then I'm going to ask him to come up and talk with you as well. So Cedar Ridge Elementary. Oh, are we not on this morning? There it goes. Again, teacher, not public speaker. Ha! So as soon as I pulled in, I was greeted with these sweet, precious children. And they knew everything about me. As I walked up, they greeted me by name, asked how my drive from Conway was, and proceeded to tell me what we were about to see. These were fourth graders, correct? Third graders. Third graders. Third graders.
Fourth graders.
Fourth graders. Still impressive. Impressive. They're the lighthouse, is that correct?
Lighthouse committee.
Lighthouse committee. So they're like the leaders of the school. And they were absolutely responsible for my morning at this school. They introduced me to the assistant principal. The principal was actually in her PLCs that morning. And she is here today, as well as the superintendent from Cedar Ridge. They're all about leaders. And I loved this wall that just says leaders with these students' faces. And they could tell me what makes a good leader. And their back of their shirt showed what makes a good leader. And these kids demonstrated what makes a good leader. I was so impressed. I was speechless with these kids walking around. Cedar Ridge Elementary has a full-time STEM classroom. I've yet to ever see this. This is a classroom where a teacher teaches STEM as an activity class, a pull-out class for all students throughout the school. Absolutely incredible. And what an amazing job that would be. I was so impressed. Oh, this wall got me. So we're walking around, and they said, oh, this is our reflection wall. And I asked the kids, you know, what do you use this for? And the little boy that was with us says, oh, you know, if you're just ever having a really bad day, or if someone says something mean to you, you can come and look at yourself. And you can see that, no, you're a leader. And you're going to tell yourself you're a leader. And he demonstrated that for me. Yeah. That was something. This is an entire wall that these students had created, these positive messages. This was an assignment in a class, to do these positive, these motivational posters. And they stood there, and they talked about, oh, that's the one that you did. This is the one that you did. And I just thought, this, this is it. This is what is, this is what we need. And then I shared with you a video that was on the news about their custodian and what he does for the students in the school at Christmas time. I went after Christmas, and we walk into this cafeteria, and he had already taken down a lot of what he had put up. But it was like walking into a fairy tale. And so I asked the kids, what is, what is this? And they said, oh, that's our custodian. And he does that every year. He decorates. You really should have seen it when it was all the way up. And then they proceeded to tell me that his father had passed away, and how that's why he was late getting the decorations down. And I just thought, what a community that these young children understand that this custodian has gone way above what his responsibilities are. They appreciate it. They know what's going on in his life. And they were able to talk to me about that, about how sad they were for him. And then they took me to Mr. Ward's classroom, which is called the DIN. And it's for diversified educational needs. And those children told me that. We're going to the diversified educational needs classroom, also known as the ALE classroom. So I walk in, and before I even got there, Mr. Ward had sent me an email that said, just be aware, my students all come from different backgrounds. They're in my classroom for a reason. And having an outsider come in may be a little bit tough. And understand that. They sat me in the middle of the room, and each one of these boys stood up and presented to me their favorite thing they've learned. And I was absolutely blown away. I was fighting tears the whole time, because I knew I could not cry in front of these boys. He had boys from kindergarten up to...
Second grade.
Second grade to fifth grade. Some of these kids he's had for year after year after year. You would have never known this was an ALE classroom. I would have expected this to be a gifted classroom by what these kids taught me. And most of the picture, I mean, there was, they have these mealworms, and they couldn't wait to get out and show these gross, incredible things to me. And they explained every bit to me. And they explained how the baby chicken hatches out of an egg. And they explained so many things. I learned more in that hour, sitting in that classroom with those seven boys. I was absolutely blown away, and how enthusiastic they were to share with me what they had learned. My face, the entire time I was there, was just this awe. And when we got finished, I told, I just, on the way home with Megan, I said, as I sat in this classroom, I thought about our mission and vision of the Department of Ed, of being student-focused learning. What Mr. Ward does in his classroom does not look like what you would expect a classroom to look like. He does student-focused learning in such an authentic way, because everything he does in that classroom is for those children in his room that day. He lets them determine what they learn. He lets them take the lead. And I wanted to take off my Teacher of the Year badge and hand it to him, because I felt so inadequate leaving his classroom. And so I want you to meet Mr. Ward.
That was very humbling and very nice. I'd like to say, when Ms. House come to my classroom, I was extremely nervous. I'm proud of what I do, and I'm proud of my boys, but it was almost like having a preacher come to your house. You check in and see what you might need to hide. As she said, my classroom is called the DIN, and that stands for diversified educational needs. It is an alternative classroom. I serve kids this year, and it varies from year to year, but I serve kids from grade second through fifth grade. There is a strict criteria for children to come into my program set by the state. What I see with most of my kids, though, is that I have children that are highly mobile, that have been shuffled from school to school to school, and as a result, have got behind. I have children that have suffered from every kind of abuse known to man. I have children, I guess every child in my classroom is from a divided home. They have social and emotional problems that prevent them from functioning in the regular classroom. They're not bad kids at all. They're kids that have given up on education, though. And so when they come into my classroom, I set some strict guidelines. One of the first things that I tell my kids when they come in is that, no matter what, I'm not going to lie to you. Because they feel like that everybody that has come in contact with them, in one way or another, has betrayed them. Sometimes that statement will come back to bite me. And I tell them, I said, be careful what you ask me, because I'm going to tell you the truth. And so sometimes the truth is not easy to hear. When they come in, each child is assessed, and we come up with a plan. We figure out what they need and what areas they need to work on. My curriculum, my plans are very much out of the norm. I feel like that the first thing that I have to do is I have to establish a safe working environment. I want the kids to come in and know that when they walk in, that if they have an idea, that we're going to make it grow. And that's, we spend a lot of time focusing on that. Another thing is, I want to build the relationships with them, because they desperately need a positive role model in their life. And then another thing that I do is, I do everything I can to reestablish their love for books. We do a tremendous amount of read-alouts. What I've found is, these kids are that, especially a child that has been moved around a lot, a lot of times, they have difficulty in reading. And as a result, they don't have the ability to visualize. And so I said, and we'll read a book, and we'll stop, and we'll talk about it, and we'll draw pictures. And I'm trying to bring the learning back to life for them. Recently, when we read the book Hatchet, my boys, I taught science, I taught math, I taught geography, and they were begging for more. Because once the interest is piqued, they will come to you and say, teach me more. And when you get that, half of the battle is over. In terms of math, this is going to sound really silly, and I feel kind of bad saying this in front of you, but I drive home the principles that they have to know: addition, subtraction, multiplication, division. If they have that foundation, where it's there instant, then I immerse them in hands-on activities, then they're coming to me and say, teach me how to do this part of it, and teach me how to do this part of it. And if they have those skills, I can teach them anything. And so we approach education a lot different than a lot of other classrooms. I want to share some of the things that I've done with you. When I'm talking about real-life projects, a lot of it revolves around animals. And I know for a lot of people, when I say it revolves around animals, it sends up red flags. But in my classroom, over the, and this is my seventh year, in those seven years, we've done projects in taking care of horses, chickens, dogs, rabbits, and I hated the rabbits. Mealworms. We have done aquaphonic projects with fish and growing plants. And a lot of it depends on where the children's actual interests lie. And so I use all of this, and I teach, I teach my math, I teach my science, I teach my reading, because we're doing all this research, we're teaching history. But at the same time, they don't realize it. One of the biggest compliments that I received from one of my former students is I had a little boy that came to me in first grade, and he was, he was a challenge. But he had a very successful year. And the next year, he went back into the regular classroom, and I met him in the hallway, and he said, oh, I wish I was back in your classroom. All we did was play. And I was like, I miss you. What he didn't realize is, he scored, he was, he was one of the, scored one of the top scores in his class on the state testing at the end of the year, because of his playing. So I'd like to tell you some of the projects that we have done. I do have a little bit of a problem. Y'all have a meeting at 10 o'clock, and I only have about three hours of things lined up to tell you about. So please bear with me. And if it gets to a point, just give me this thing, and I'll shut up. One, the first year that I taught, I was using a horse. And I'd made an agreement with our ag teacher, and we kept the horse at the ag barn, and we would go use it as we needed. And so I had these two boys assigned to my classroom. One was a fourth grader, and the other one was a fifth. And they were to just put it in plain terms, they were bullies. They ruled the playground. They were physically, emotionally, verbally abusive to everyone around them. And they exhibited exactly the same characteristics themselves. When they came to my classroom, they were very, had a wall up. And I would try to talk to them about what was going on in their life, and that there was no reasoning with them. So first week, I said, let's go to the barn, and we have some work to do. And so we took my whole class and my aide, and we, everybody's doing different projects in the barn, and I put a halter and leader up on our horse, and I lead her out, and I have to give her to one of the bullies, and I said, here, hold her. And he started panicking. He was like, but her feet are moving. I can't get her to stop. She's moving around. I was like, just lead her around and let her eat grass. This child went into full-blown panic mode, and I thought he was going to have an anxiety attack. After about five minutes of it, I went and took the horse back, and I gave it to the other bully. And when I saw, when he got a hold of the horse, it was amazing. He started going to everybody, okay, now everybody needs, let me turn the horses back in away from everyone. Everybody stay back this distance. Now you don't walk here. And he starts barking out orders, trying to protect everybody. So we had about 30 minutes at the barn, and we went back to class, and my aide has the rest of my class doing things. As I pulled the kids one at a time, and we talked, we processed what happened at the barn. Because everybody, there was something different happening with them at the barn. One of the boys, we started talking, and I said, why were you so upset when the horse started to move? He said, I couldn't control her. He said, she was moving, and I could, I could say stop, and she wouldn't stop. In about five minutes, the barriers came down, and he started talking about his home life. And turns out, his mother was in an abusive relationship. Everything in his life was dictated by his stepfather. He had no control over anything that happened in his life. And the only place that he ever was able to grasp any kind of control was when he walked onto that playground, and he was the bully. And if he could make them do what he wanted to, then it gave him some sort of satisfaction. I brought the other little boy in, and we started talking. And the same thing happened. He breaks down within five minutes. And I find out that when he was eight years old, that he was living with his grandparents. And his grandfather and him were alone in the house, and his grandfather had a heart attack. And he performed CPR on it, called 911 and performed CPR on his grandfather until the paramedics arrived. His grandfather died, and he had spent the next three years determined that he was going to keep everybody around him safe. And the only way he could do that is if he controlled everything that happened on that playground. Both of these boys, we were able to look at the core issues and address it in completely different ways. If I would have just went with a blanket approach of, he's a bully, and this is the way you handle a bully, it would have never worked. There are a lot of things in my classroom that I do teach academically, but one of the big things that I've learned is that when you form a relationship with kids, that you help them to be better people. One, on a side note, one of the little boy, one of those two little boys, he was very far behind in reading. And he was embarrassed, because he was the tough guy. He was embarrassed to read in front of other kids, because he stammered, and he stuttered, and he was slow. But he was sitting in the backyard of our classroom with the horse for 30 minutes at a time and read to her. My aide would sit out there and pretend to be doing lawn work and whatever while he was doing it. And more than one time, she'd come in, and she'd say, he read for 30 minutes, and then he just broke down and started crying and talking to the horse. Both of these boys ended up going back into the regular classroom and are successful. Well, one of them has graduated now, and one of them is, is in middle, in the upper level of high school now. And they're both, they're not perfect, but they're being successful kids. I think that they're going to be successful adults. One of the things that surprised me, that was so impactful, was we brought in chickens into the classroom. We didn't, I mean, not always they weren't in the classroom. Most of the time, we built, but one of our first projects is, we built what's called a chicken tractor. And when, and this is basically a small barn with a coop on it, that, and I didn't build it. The boys built it. I told someone, if you want a child to know what 11 and 1/2 inches is, have him cut a tube before with a handsaw. And every time he cuts it wrong, have him cut it again. And then about the third time, he gets 11 and 1/2 inches. He knows what it means. So we built this chicken, chicken run. We researched, and we studied our chickens. We had done everything that you can imagine. We bought pullets. We have kept accurate records on how much money we were spending. The chicks, chickens finally, after about six months, they started to lay eggs. Now, if you know anything about chickens, the first eggs were kind of small. My boys were so excited, but at the same time, they were a little bit disappointed. And I told them, I said, don't worry, those eggs are going to get bigger. Okay? They'd been laying for about a week, and I have this young man comes in one day, and he's, he's one of my kids that was making the full turnaround. And he come in, and he was mad. He wouldn't make eye contact with me, he wouldn't speak to me, all for the first four hours of school. I could tell something's wrong, and I tried to approach him, and he'd just, you know, put up his hand, give me the signal. And finally, I pulled him outside, and I said, look, we have to talk, something's wrong. And he broke down, and he started crying. He said, you lied to me. And I said, I lied to you? I said, how did I lie to you? And he walked back in the classroom, and he got a carton of eggs, and he brought them in. He said, I've looked at these eggs every day, and they're not a bit bigger than they were. Well, when we did that, I had to sit down and explain, okay, what I meant was, the more eggs that they lay, the bigger they will get. He said, that's not what you said. And so we had, but everything that happens in my classroom, it turns into a teachable moment. So we talked about how concise language is important, how what you perceive and what I perceive may be completely different, and how that there's misunderstandings, and how important it is to talk about our problems. One of the greatest lessons, though, that came from the chickens, is we had some volunteers that found out we were involved with the chickens. So they sent us a bunch of eggs, fresh farm eggs. And there were light brown eggs, and there was dark brown eggs, and there was white eggs, and there was green eggs. And so the kids, they were just amazed with all the different colors of eggs, because the chickens that we had just laid brown eggs. And so we did a class on how you take those eggs and you look at them, and all of those eggs were different on the outside. And then we opened the eggs up, and they were the same on the inside. We even did blind taste tests, and I cooked omelets, and I taught the kids how to cook omelets. And they were trying to try to pick which egg it was, and they couldn't do it. It was a great lesson in diversity. And then we decided that we were going to incubate some of the eggs. So we set up an incubator, and we started the process. And in about five days, we decided that we were going to candle the eggs. Now, if you're not familiar with it, you can shine a light through a candle, it will, it's translucent, so you can see the development inside. All of that works, except on a green egg. And we found out that green eggs, you can't see inside of them. And it was driving my kids crazy. And so every four days, we would look at the development of the eggs and see how much they had progressed. And the kids were getting on the computer, and they were saying, well, is this right? Because they wanted to make sure that, it's like, they couldn't believe the egg itself, they had to believe the internet. Okay? But they were researching, so I was happy. So they came in, and by the, by the time that we got to about day 12, they had reached their, their point that curiosity was killing them. And they started begging me, please, let's open up, there was only five green eggs. And for some reason, that made them special. And they said, we have to know if they're fertile. And I was like, you will know at 21 days if they're fertile or not. And they's like, no, it's killing us. We have to know. So one little boy even come in, and he come up with the argument, I found where I have, all through our history, we've done animal research. He said, we can just open an egg up, and if there's a live chick in there, it'll be okay. It's in the name of science. So I said, okay, I'm not sure about this, but we'll try. So they voted on it. And I, we sat down, and we had a conversation. I told them, I said, understand, if we open this egg, and it's fertile, that chick is going to die. So they all weighed the consequences, and they voted unanimously, they wanted to open the egg up. And so we cracked the egg open, and sure enough, it was fertile, and there was a chick in it, tried to stand up. And we talked about how the lungs weren't developed, and what was going to happen. And in 10 minutes, the chick died, and we had to have a funeral. But the most important thing is, the next day, I had a little fifth grader walk into in my classroom, and he was visibly bothered. And he said, I have to talk. And I was like, okay. He said, yesterday, he said, we opened that egg up. And I said, yes, yeah, we did. And he said, that chick died. And I said, yes, it did. He said, in order for it to die, it had to be alive. And I said, yes, it did. He said, I watched the news last night. And he said, they were talking about abortion. And he said, what's the difference? And we said, and we had a 30-minute conversation about the sanctity of life. That fifth grader had spent more time and had a more educated approach on what life means than most adults in our country today has. And so, so when we, when they finished their conversation, he said, okay, he said, something else is bothering me. And I said, what's that? He said, before we put those eggs in the incubator, he said, there's a fertilized, what's called a germ. And I said, yes. He said, is that, is that alive? And I said, well, I said, it goes back to this whole conversation, when life starts. And he said, well, he said, I've been thinking about this a lot last night. He said, it may be, but I still want the omelets. So, so my kids, they look at things completely different. We've done projects in my class, including building, we build cars, in which we take recycled material, and they build gravity cars. And, and so this is, this is made out of lawnmower wheels and tuba fours, and it's, it's not very pretty a lot of times, but they do roll. And so we will go out, and we'll race the cars, and we'll time the distance, and they'll be sitting there, and they'll be doing projects figuring feet per second. And what's so great about it is, is when you give them opportunities like this, they come in. And I'll never forget, I, we did this race one time, and we had all the numbers charted, and we had made graphs, and they, they were taking this raw data and putting it into practice. And this little chubby boy in my class, he's like, I had the slowest time. And I said, yes, you did. He said, is it because I'm fat? And so it brought in a whole class on friction. And so we talked about, and it, the learning was alive. And so what I see is that when you give these kids the opportunity, they're going to be hungry, and they're going to want to learn, and they're going to expand. And that, and someone says, well, how can you teach a second grader and a fifth grader in the same classroom? Well, it's not easy. Okay? But the thing about this, what I've seen, is that they all pull up as high as they can go when they're hungry. And that's my job to make, to make them hungry. I could go on, and to be honest, I could sit here, and I'm not kidding, I could talk for three hours. I'm very proud of what my kids do. When Ms. House showed the video, I'll be honest, it was all I could do to keep from crying. Because a lot of those kids, if it was me, I don't know if I could get out of bed in the morning and come to school. And, and so I come in, and I know that sitting here, some of y'all think, well, these, some of y'all may think this is neat stories or whatever, but how effective are they? And so I think that it's important that we examine how that we study, or how we examine the success of a program. And, you know, our first instinct is to think test scores. And I'll be honest with you, and this is not politically correct, I don't care about test scores. What I do care about is that kids come into my classroom, that they feel loved, that they feel that they're accepted. There was a poster there, our classroom, our school is a leader-in-me school, and we, every class picked up a motto, and our kids picked the motto, we all belong. And for me, that was a huge sign of success, that they walked into my classroom. These kids are outcasts. These are kids that society has let them down, that the school system, that is supposed to be their safe place, has made them feel dumb. And they walk into my classroom, and if, after they stay for a little while, they feel like they all belong. And I measure that in success. But at the same time, we've been in, my classroom has had six full years of instruction. In those six full years, in those six years, four years, we've got, received state recognition for being in the top five scoring ALE classrooms in the state of Arkansas. Once, we were, had the highest scores in both literacy and math in, in all, in alternative ed elementary. And then, year before last, we had the highest math scores in the state of Arkansas in alternative ed, and they were on par with, with the state average. And these are kids that some people consider throwaway kids. I prefer to think of my kids as perfectly formed square pegs that we're trying in education to shove into round holes. And, and these are kids that, um, some people consider throwaway kids. I prefer to think of my kids as perfectly formed square pegs that we're trying in education to shove into round holes. In my career, I have been a high school history teacher, I've taught psychology, I have, uh, served a year as a dean of students, I was a high school principal, I've spent five years as a superintendent of the Arkansas Sheriff's Youth Ranch that provides home, for homes for homeless children, and I honestly believe that alternative education is the most important job that I've ever done in my life. I think that, uh, as we progress farther, that if there was some of the strategies that was used in alternative education that were applied in the regular classroom, that there would be a lot more children positively impacted, and I thank y'all for the opportunity to speak to you today. Thank you.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
Some of the things you were sharing were, were things that we used to look for in, when we determined whether we would look at a child as gifted. You know, the curiosity, the let's grow, the, "I can be better," like, "I'm doing this at night." Do, uh, do, do, do y'all have an active gifted and talented program?
Yes, we, we have a very, very good gifted and talented program. Uh, in fact, they're receiving a recognition this week for have been one of the top GT programs in the state, and our, my G, the GT teacher and I are, are close friends, and we talk a lot about the fact that my classroom and hers probably run parallel closer than anything that, uh, that, that we, either one of us have encountered before.
Yeah, well, good, great, uh, because I think people think ALE is just for, uh, bad kids, as opposed to gifted kids. It's just an alternative that doesn't work in the regular.
Right, and, and that is a stigma that, that we have to, uh, have to fight all the time, because even, and we tell kids, when they can, when we interview for my program, this is not a punishment, and, but the stigma is there when you say alternative ed. Uh, I, I want to tell one more story. Uh, I, I had a young man a couple of years ago, and he's in high school now, and he had extremely high IQ, but he had, was mildly autistic, and when we got our new superintendent, he came into the classroom one day, and we had done a project where we had flying airplanes, and then, they were measuring the airplanes, and they come back and grafted, and they were charting, uh, had the chart, and I, I told him, I said, "I want you to convert it into, from inches to feet." So, they were coming in, and Mr., Dr. Ashley come in, and he's, he was asking the kids, "What are you doing today?" And this, and so, he walked up to this young man, and he said, "So, what are you doing?" And he explained the project, and he said, "I'm converting it from feet each," and he said, "Well, how do you convert it?" The little boy took a deep sigh, and kind of rolled his eyes, and he said, "You divide by 12." Dr. Ashley said, "Why don't you divide by 10?" And he looked at him, and he said, "Are there 10 inches in a foot?" And, and so, 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 he, uh, so, Dr. Ashley left, and he looked at me, and he said, "Is that guy your boss?" And I was like, "Yes, he is." He said, "That's not good." He said, "He don't even know that there's 12 inches in a foot." That, that, a lot of our kids are brilliant, this young man was brilliant. He, the same child come in and asked me to explain what a Tesseract was to him. I mean, they, it's amazing what they want to know, but a lot of times, it's just the little social skills that are not there, but, but, but again, it's brilliant kids.
Thank you, thank you so much.
I just, I'm amazed, and I wish we had a million of you to go around Arkansas and around, around the nation, because this is what kids need, this is what kids need, and thank you for sharing, thank you, Ms. House, for bringing him in. Thank you for what you do for kids.
What called you to this? How did you find your way to this moment?
Um, as, as I said, um, I had a plan when I was a kid, I wanted to be a teacher, I was going to go to, I went to a small community, Court, from Charlotte, Arkansas. Uh, my plan was, is I was going to grow up and be a teacher, I was going to then become principal, and I was going to stay at Court Charlotte until I retired and go home. Um, we, in our school, uh, was consolidated into Cedar Ridge that it is now, it, to be honest, it broke my heart, I left education for five years to go to the Sheriff's Ranch. I thought that was important, but, um, when they decided to start an alternative program in our, uh, in, in the district, um, Dr. Webb, uh, our current, the superintendent at the time, she approached me, and she said, "Have you ever just wanted to go into a classroom and say, 'Here's the kids that nobody else can teach, just do what you do.'" And I said, "That would be a dream," and she said, "Well, if you wanted, it's yours." And, and that's, and, and I've all, all the way through my career, I've always felt drawn to the kids that, um, didn't fit the mold. Uh, to be honest, I was one of those kids that didn't fit the mold, and so, uh, it, you know, and, and I believe that all, all really good teachers are called to be teachers, and I, I think that's was my case.
You're obviously called to do right by those, those children that you serve, but it's hard to not imagine how important it could be for you to teach teachers. I mean, we all need to hear those stories, teachers deserve to hear those stories and to think about how they can be renewed and re-excited, and, because they, they want the same thing, and to something you said, I think most of us are alternative learners, if we were actually allowed to be ourselves, and not trying to comply. Um, and so, it's interesting how some of those philosophies, it'd be interesting how they could make their way into more classrooms. So, I don't know that your job allows you to go on the road, but it'd be interesting for you to take some of those stories somewhere where more teachers could hear you.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Ove.
Yes, Ms. Chambers, we are working on a plan to create some videos, zooms, webinars, whatever that might look like, to use his expertise to help train teachers and principals.
Great, great.
Was Don Wery your principal when you were over in?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, he and I were in school together, and his wife and I were real good friends, so.
Ms. Wery was my art teacher all through high school, and, and he, I still drive a bus route right by his house every day. He's, he's a great man.
If you see him, tell him Diane Zook said hello.
I, I will, I will.
Thank you so much for being, being here today, for sharing your, your story and your gifts. Thanks, Ms. House, I also want to thank the principal and superintendent for, for driving down and for allowing you to, to do what you do, so, thank you.
I'll tell you something else about Cedar Ridge, they, they have a very active, uh, Facebook presence, and if you friend them on Facebook, then you're, the opportunity to share and, and get the word out to a lot of other people, so I do appreciate that very much.
Because your kiddos did let me come in, into their world, I do have some books for them, because I do know that they love ghost stories and animal stories. Focus on that, but, thank y'all.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. House.
All right. I don't have much in the way of a report, the, um, main thing relates to logistics for next month, we talked about that a little bit yesterday, you should have gotten an email from Ms. Wendell, um, so please, um, please get, uh, that response to her as soon as possible, so we can make final arrangements for, um, our trip to northwest Arkansas next month. Uh, we will, um, obviously have a very busy trip up there, um, we are starting to talk about work sessions kind of for the stretch run, uh, of this, um, of this year of the, of the state board, and, and some of those are coming online as well, so, um, we'll, we'll provide details along the way. The other thing I, I do want to remind you, I'll, I'll ask Mr. Ballard, if you could send an email to the board, um, whenever you get free, to remind folks to send in their, uh, what they need related to the Haas Hall report, uh, by Monday at noon, if you could just send an email reminder that'll, and, and reply to that, and, and do that by noon on Monday, so we can get, uh, be, uh, do right by the Haas Hall people and, and get their, um, get that request back out. So, that's really all I have right now.
Commissioner?
So, several items, uh, we'll start with, Dan, are you ready for the video? Y'all remember last year, uh, some of you that were here, I think we maybe have some folks that didn't see it, but we had the No Limits campaign, uh, last year, and that was to encourage, uh, preparation and, um, for the ACT, and also encourage students to take the ACT multiple times. We now have, um, one statewide, uh, ACT opportunity for all 11th graders, we also have a number of other methods for, uh, students to, uh, that maybe can't afford the fee to get access to the ACT. So, we just wanted to play this, it may be, uh, familiar to some of you, some of you may be refresher, but Dan, if you go ahead and play that for us.
All right, so before we get started today, there are a few things that we're going to need to go over.
Well, my Arkansas juniors, this song's for you. There are many different routes leading to success, and I know tests can make us feel pretty stressed, but you need to have a plan for what you really want to be.
And the first step is.
Take the ACT! ACT, ACT, there's no limit to what you can achieve. ACT, ACT, there's no limit to what you can do or be. Take it from me, first time I took it, I got a 23, but wait, here's the key, just listen to me, the more you take the test, the more your score will increase, not everyone will make a 36, and that's okay, there's nothing wrong with a 21 or 28, there's nothing wrong with any score in between, the average first-time score is like a 17. High score means more opportunities, you can go explore the world, study in your community, it's okay to have fun, but you have to take it serious, when you look back on life, you think yourself of the experience. Woo! ACT, ACT, there's no limit to what you can achieve. ACT, ACT, there's no limit to what you can do or be. Yeah, you heard me right, I said there isn't a limit, the reason why I'm telling you is because there really isn't, don't believe it if you hear it any different, the higher your score is waiting on you to make it, study, try your hardest, all you got to do is take it, your goal is in front of you, all you have to do is chase it, I'm telling you, it's now, take it more than once, and knock it out, take it once, take it twice, okay, that 19 is looking nice, take it three, four, five, look at you, you got a 22 this time, why not take it a six or a seven, I bet that 24 feels like heaven, take it eight, nine, 10, you can take up to 12, so go and take it again, ooh, you on fire, ooh, you on fire, oh my gosh. Take it again, see if you can get it even higher, take it some more, take it some more, see if you can get an even higher score, the high score is waiting on you, walk in the testing room like you own it, you got the look, you got the brain, and guess what? You've always known it. ACT, ACT, there's no limit to what you can do or be.
As we get ready to begin, I want everyone to make sure to do their absolute best.
So, if y'all remember Chauncey, uh, the artist, uh, who, who, I think he did almost everything, with the exception of, uh, the video, I think he did the, the mixing, he, he wrote the lyrics, he, every part of it was his voice, uh, it, it was just amazing talent, uh, but he's also the son of, of our, uh, Chantel Williams here at the department, and he is, he was a senior at Central when he did this, so now, he's in, at college, uh, but, uh, we, we're recycling this because it was so good, uh, to, and on the 20th, is that right, February 20th, is when all the juniors in the state will be taking, uh, the ACT under the statewide, uh, plan. Uh, so, we have that, that we want to remind you about. Uh, we also, uh, will be emailing you, if Gina hasn't already done it, you probably have it on your email, uh, but the AAA, the Arkansas Activities Association, um, I think last week, uh, released their, uh, study, and it's, uh, Why Participate Study, and it was work that we have done, we've mentioned it to you, uh, several months ago, but using data, and our, our data team actually created a way to school, for schools to report the information that we needed for this, so that it's not just athletics, but it's activities and, and the benefit of, and higher performance that we see with students who are involved with school activities. Uh, Dr. Hill, I know you and I have talked about this quite a bit, uh, but the results of that study have been released, and you all will have access to that, uh, with the email that Gina sent you. And then, an update on, uh, the legislation, you know, the first part of the session, we're about a month in now, and, uh, the focus has been, uh, with the governor's legislative package, uh, the House Bill 1145 is on, which is the increase to the minimum teacher salary over four years, that has passed both houses, and it's on its way to the governor for his signature. Uh, Senate Bill 199, dealing with the school counselors and revising our school counseling program, uh, is at, uh, passed the House Committee yesterday, and it will be voted on by the full house on Mon, uh, Monday. So, we're looking forward to passage of that, and then, the department bills, we have five of those that have been filed, uh, the rest of them are still, uh, at the Bureau of Legislative Research being drafted, and, uh, we'll be, uh, working through those, so hopefully by next month, uh, all or most of those bills will be through the process, but we'll give you an update on those at that point.
Any questions, Commissioner?
All right, good. Okay, um, then, um, our last chunk of items, uh, for this morning, um, are the standing committees liaisons, um, and task forces, um, and I'll start with family engagement. Christine, are you, do you have anything?
I do.
Okay.
Just want to say how excited I am that we've got our frameworks, yay. Kim Wright, Megan Abels, Adana Spain, Freddie Scott, Ms. David Kaufman have all been a part of this process, and, um, it's, they've done a phenomenal job. Thank you again, Commissioner Key, for, for those hires and, and putting the, uh, emphasis and, and the importance on, on those positions, I really appreciate it. We've done, they've done a great job, along with all of the stakeholders from the Coalition, um, that have helped us with this process. So, on February 21st, the Coalition, the Department of Human Services, the Division of Childcare and Early Childhood Education, and Teacher Leader Advisor Group stakeholders will meet to provide a toolkit, um, to provide the toolkit resources, so they're going to work on getting that finished up, and I've made arrangements for them for lunch, and, um, the feedback loops will be used in the spring of 2019 regarding report card feedback. And the current focus for the Office of Family and Community Engagement is to finalize all portions of the framework and toolkit for future distribution and utilization. I'll just give you a little bit about the framework, it was created to assist with engaging families, schools, and communities in two-way communication. It provides organizational structure for the toolkit, um, and it was designed to encourage conversations and increase support for families, schools, and community members to be actively engaged in children's development and education. It was developed by the Arkansas Department of Education in partnership with the State Board of Education, Arkansas Family and Community Engagement Coalition, Department of Human Services, Division of Childcare and Early Childhood Education, and, and the Arkansas stakeholders. Um, and it will offer helpful resources for anyone interested in enhancing engagement within their local communities and school districts and schools. I've already been getting phone calls and emails about how they, just some of the, the stakeholders and the Coalition members are taking that back to their communities and already using what we've kind of come up with just from the meeting, so, uh, it's already creating some good buzz. The framework and toolkit are resources for communication, um, and they're not intended as a regulatory requirement or as an official department guidance, uh, districts should follow board-approved policies for final decision-making. As the Office of Family and Community Engagement finalizes the toolkit, plans continue for the development of training, so that's our next step. Thank you.
Any questions? And so, that group is meeting?
Next Thursday, 21st.
Okay, great, all right.
On the, on the family engagement piece, can I just, I just want to share and kind of piggyback on off of, uh, the commissioner, on the, that's the AAA study on the top end, talking about activities, uh, extracurricular involved, extracurricular activities, so I got my results from the Sixth and Gold, the Little Rock School District study, which I collected data, and I'll be sharing this with, I'll be sending it out to you, but getting it over to the commissioner, I had, because one other question I had asked, but the program questions for the, uh, design of the study were really three, was what is the impact of a Sixth and Gold model-up program on academic performance, was the impact of Sixth and Gold model-up program on student attendance, was the impact of Sixth and Gold model-up program on student discipline incidents? And I'll just summarize, as I shared with Ms. Newt yesterday, and what we're looking for, student discipline incidents, five or more, and so, in the first nine weeks of last fall, 2018, there were no reported student discipline incidents during the first nine weeks of everybody involved in the, the program. So, what we looked at, student engagement, is because of the volunteer coaches going into the school, uh, modeling the behavior that we wanting, once a week, having them have lunch with them, meeting with them, practicing with them after school, and meeting with them on the weekend. But then, what we're finding, after the nine weeks over, and don't have that involvement, it goes back to spike, so, having a meeting, looking at possibly, trying, trying to bring in the wrestling to help for the next nine weeks, so if we can keep the participation in, so hopefully, we can go 18 the whole semester, because then, we have that, because a, a group to go to play basketball and, and have that activity, but that other group that's not, they don't have any, they're not having any involvement, and we're getting ready to do the volleyball, now the basketball's over for the young ladies in the Little Rock School District, so, all those things, trying to drive participation for retention, for academic achievement, for, as the commissioner said, what you see happening in senior year also happens down at the sixth grade as well. So, that's the family engagement piece, to take those volunteers, and what I, what I sense is that when the volunteers show up in the classes, because, you know, they get to go and leave, they're coming there with higher energy, let's go, they're not there all day long, and so, they step in there, eat lunch with them, see them after school. They're not there all day long, and so they step in there, eat lunch with them, see them after school, look forward to seeing them on Saturdays, and, and, uh, and what we're getting as a behavior modification approach to, to discipline.
Great, sounds good. Any questions, comments? Thank y'all both. Um, next up, uh, on the forward front, Ms. Newton?
Uh, yes, uh, I got an email. Uh, the things they said were they are continuing to, uh, have success stories in their communities, from, in the forward communities for the, uh, which are to remind you of P Ridge, Springdale, Independence County, which includes, uh, Cedar Ridge, and, uh, Crossit and Lee County? Is that correct? Yeah, Lee County, okay. And then, uh, uh, they are, uh, working on an East program in, um, in Lee County. Uh, they, uh, one of the goals of, in the nineteen is to complete development of plans for how they can work in more communities across the state through the lens of the Forward Learning Network. Uh, later this spring, they'll be wrapping up their second, uh, Clinton School practicum project in Little Rock School Districts, uh, helping to, uh, to the district to implement project-based learning in the middle schools. And, uh, they've been working one-on-one with each of the district's eight middle schools, uh, through the Clinton School. And they're currently exploring a number of opportunities to expand their reach and build upon their impact as they see it in the Delta, in the Arkansas Delta, and in response to, uh, requests from the Commission. And can you, I'm, I'm not close enough, sorry. I'm not going to start again. On the, excuse me, on the policy front, uh, they continue their work with the aid of the state in implementing some of the best practices for data collection and use from around the country that were shared and on their data, data symposium, which they had in the fall. Uh, it's clearer than ever that, uh, in their opinion, that they need stronger data systems in Arkansas if we are going to make informed policy decisions, uh, with everything from increased funding and, uh, pre-K, uh, the effectiveness of initiatives to emphasize the science of reading, and, uh, particularly in the elementary level, and to have best prepare young Arkansans to, uh, productive members of the workforce. Uh, Dr. Hill and I were talking yesterday, is if, if this side can teach them to read and that other side get them involved in activities, then we will solve the, uh, school-to-prison pipeline.
Anything else? Thank you, Ms. Zook. Um, and next up, uh, the ESA report from Ms. Newton?
We had our, uh, a steering committee meeting on January thirtieth. We were given an update on the peer review for the alignment study between standards and assessments. Uh, it was going on, uh, at that particular time. Uh, they gathered, um, information from, uh, steer, um, stakeholder groups of teachers, uh, looking at each one of the different, uh, test bands and subject areas. Uh, that information will go to the TAC group in March, and then ACS, uh, is going to compile a report for later in the year. Uh, we also got, uh, an update on the Perkins Five Grant, uh, which is the ESA for the career unit. They are working on a four-year plan, and they are working together with the, uh, experts here at the department, because it's very similar to what, what, uh, our department had to do with, uh, ESA, and so they're, uh, drawing on their expertise. Uh, nineteen-twenty will be a transition year for, for the Perkins Five Grant, and then go into effect after that. Uh, we, uh, heard that, uh, the amendment request has been submitted, uh, but, uh, to the United States Department of Education, but there's no timeline of when, uh, we will hear a response on that. Uh, the final business rules for calculating the twenty-nineteen ESA School Index scores has been posted. Uh, stakeholders provided feedback, and that went out in a commissary memo. Uh, the ten double oh three grants, um, the districts have been ID'd, and the schools and districts are now completing applications for that. We heard information from the advisory groups, and, um, we are considering adding a special ed group to the advisory groups, so, uh, we can better look at what we need to do to better serve students in special ed across the state. Um, the ADE team will be conducting focus groups later on in the spring to gather, uh, feedback on the report cards once they come out. And our next meeting is proposed to be in Mar- uh, late March, March twenty-seventh. Um, that way we can talk about a communication plan around the, uh, report cu- report cards, and also hopefully have an update on the amendment request.
Great, that's the questions? All right, thank you, and now public school accountability, Ms. Newton?
Uh, they're working really hard every day. And, uh, I think having the, the data available, as, uh, Ms. Kaufman mentioned yesterday, and, you know, so everything now is real-time, not delayed, and they can get in and, and work with the, and I'm hearing terrific feedback from the districts and the co-ops about the work they're doing.
All right, I did ask Ms. Kaufman, and, um, and we're, maybe in the interest of time, we'll, we'll save it for today. We had a brief conversation about how the levels of support are being, uh, established and that, how that's playing out. And if, you know, I think it's a, a good and interesting process, but, um, if, if folks do have a question about that, uh, maybe we'll save that for, for next time to talk a little bit more, uh, when we have, uh, a meeting here to talk where that, where we are in that process and, and how that's going to play out in the months to come. Sound good? Okay, now to NAS, no, AD Human Resources, anything, Ms. Chambers? Okay, uh, and then, uh, National Association of State Boards of Ed, anything, Ms. Newton?
The Governor Affairs Committee met on Monday. They, um, giving an update on what's happening in Congress. The, uh, House Ed and Senate Ed have had their first hearings. One of the focuses, uh, this year in House Ed is going to be, uh, a, a legislation called Rebuild America Schools Act of twenty nineteen. It's going to be a, as of right now, a seventy-billion-dollar grant program and a thirty-billion-dollar tax credit bond program, uh, target, targeted at addressing the physical and digital infrastructure needs of high-poverty schools. And so that work is ongoing. One of the major legislative focuses of both the House Ed and Senate Ed is reauthori- reauthorization of the Higher Education Act. Um, in the Ha- on the House side, the process is expected to take place this spring and summer, with the chairman aiming to move a bill at the end of twenty nineteen. But on the Senate side, um, the, uh, chairman intends to move the HGA process forward on a faster timeline than the House, with a goal of having, uh, committee to begin to consider a bill this spring with a full Senate chamber action during the summer, and then conference committee working at the end of the year. So that has to be worked out. Um, the, uh, uh, Affairs, Governor Affairs Committee is going to be moving from a monthly meeting to a bi-monthly meeting, so our next meeting won't be until April. And they reminded everyone to register for the, um, Legislative Conference. Uh, the deadline for early registration is February sixteenth.
Tomorrow? Great, okay. Um, and then finally, uh, Special Education, anything, Ms. Zook?
Uh, yes, and of course y'all heard from Special Education yesterday and, and the work they did on the ground, uh, and one day in particular, but they've also been working, uh, with different groups of, uh, uh, about ways to help the English learners who have disabilities. And, um, they are, have also been on-site and held Zoom meetings with districts who have the, uh, significantly over the one percent of the severely cognitively involved to see if it's, you know, if, if it really is that. And, uh, also in working on the alternative pathways to graduation, some of these things that we worked on yesterday. And, uh, the Lieutenant Governor wanted me to mention the fact that, uh, the article or the op-ed that he wrote in, on the paper on school choice, that Arkansas, uh, that Secretary DeVos actually saw that and then retweeted it out across the nation in recognizing Arkansas once again for being a leader and, and parent and child-focused.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Anything else to come before us at this meeting? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting? All right, motion by Ms. McFetris, second by Ms. Dean. All in favor, say aye. Pose same sign, okay. So we are done with this. Let's take a five-minute break, um, and we'll come back in just, just a few minutes, and then we'll pick up with our special meeting.